Good evening. This meeting of the Board of Education is now in session. Because we're going to have some inclement weather, I think the first thing that we need to do is to change the order of our agenda a little bit and have the RJ Bailey presentation so that everybody can do what they need to do and get out of here before the snow gets too deep. So, without further ado, Dr. Chase, can you start the presentation for RJ Bailey?
Good evening. I'm not sure if the principal wants to be here or if he wants to be in the audience. Okay, so we're going to go to the audience so that we can hear the presentation for RJ Bailey.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for coming to the RJ Bailey Greenberg Board presentation. We are so excited this evening to present what we have been doing at RJ Bailey, some of our plans, and some of the things we're thinking about for the future. And we have many of our stakeholders here so that they didn't give you information about what's happening at RJ Bailey Elementary School. So I'm going to work with a wonderful clicker. So our presentation outline, first, we're going to talk to you about steps for improvement. We understand that there's some data out there from New York State that represents RJ Bailey Elementary School. And like my superintendent told me, she said, "Know your data, own your data." We also will talk about database decision-making and essential models and processes for success that the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and the Board of Education we have put together to truly help our students here at RJ Bailey. In your folders, you will see the presentation. And we wanted to first start with, we are on our way to excellence. We know that our superintendent has a vision for a world-class school district, and we know part of a world-class school district is the data that comes from New York State. So, as you see, our scores on our ELA last year, 2016, 32%. We were able to maintain 32% in 2017, but it's not good enough. We are proud of our increase in math. Last year, 2016, 29%, this year, 35%. So we are progressing, but status quo isn't good enough. Dr. Valente, during our meetings, you will say 30, 40, 50. 30% Greenberg School District, 40% Westchester, and 50, New York State. He said, "We must do better." And with Dr. Chase and Dr. Valente, we are committed to doing better here at RJ Bailey. But we do want to celebrate some of our increases. We do want to celebrate our students and our teachers who are working hard. So as a professional learning community, we celebrate the little. We do look at data, state, and district, but we do celebrate what we're doing, and we see increase, and we're very proud of our increase. In this presentation, we're going to highlight some of last year's programs, some things that the district brought to the district, but also to RJ Bailey to help with the proficiency. We will also talk about what works, and our students will let you know what's working and what's not. How do we know? Because we did some surveys. If you look in your folders, you'll see some surveys that the students actually were able to take, and they're letting me know through data what's working and how we can improve. We also will talk to you about some of our staff members, but our stakeholders, they're so important, our community, our teachers, our students. They let us know where we're going and what we need to do to improve. So you will be hearing from parents tonight, you will be hearing from students. We also see some of the things that we can continue to work on. We have established some beliefs that we will not turn from. And we also will talk about some of the problems, but the solutions that come with it. And we will brag a little tonight and let you know what we do well. 2015, the Board of Education and Dr. Chase appointed me as principal of RJ Bailey Elementary School. I had a vision. I wanted something different when it came to our master schedule. I sat down with my PLC leaders, I sat down with our teachers, and they told me that there was a teaming approach that worked, and they loved to team together. But I understood that we were an elementary school, but a very unique elementary school. We had fourth, we had fifth, then we had sixth grades. They're really junior high. So I said, "Well, I understand the TV model, I think it's great, but I have a vision for the sixth grade, so when they actually go over to Mr. Smith in middle school, the transition will be much easier." So along with Mr. Callagie, the teachers, we collaborated, and we made up this master schedule in 2015, 2016 school year. We had the teaming approach, fourth and fifth grade, two teachers, math and science, two teachers taught English and social studies. And then the sixth grade was a mini-middle school, what we called it, departmentalization. People were very proud of our master schedule, we were excited about it. And as you see in the first slide, you saw that the math scores increased, and that was under the departmentalized schedule. Dr. Valente sat down with me, and he said, "You're already departmentalized. Why don't you do the whole school?" I said, "I don't know, Dr. Valente, I don't know. They're fourth graders, they're babies, I don't know if they're going to be able to handle it." He said, "Jill, trust me, I have years of experience." So along with Mr. Callagie, Dr. Valente, and Mr. Mensch, our teachers again, we collaborated again. We created this schedule, the 2017-2018 departmentalization, fourth, fifth, and sixth. We looked at data to see, and we talked to the teachers too, because we wanted to know what their passion was. Do you like teaching math? Do you like teaching social studies? Because research shows you, you can have an elementary school teacher passionate social studies. They don't like math. So the children will get this fabulous social studies unit, but the math might be status quo. So we looked at data, and we also had conversations. So we know right now at RJ Bailey, under this departmentalized schedule, we have the right teachers teaching the right subjects. And we are excited about that, and you will hear from our students today. We are still a professional learning community. We still want to collaborate with our parents and our community to make RJ Bailey better. I'm going to tell you, I have parents who will see things, and they will call me, they will email me, and it's only to make us better. And I appreciate every time that we have conversation. We have some factors to consider. We do have our strategic goals that the Board has set in place. We understand that we are expecting 5% increase each year. We are looking at our benchmarks, we are striving for those goals as we sit. We understand that we do have up downs, we're not going to make that an excuse. We're going to continue to go forward. We do have some fourth through sixth grade scores and strategies that we are working. We have an instructional specialist this year, she's going to come up in a minute and speak to you. And we do have our expectations. We are so thankful to the community that our 2017 budget passed. It allowed us to do some hiring, and we're just so excited about that. We have a Mandarin instructor, he's here tonight. We have a part-time reading specialist, which is a wonderful thing, it's an asset to RJ Bailey. We have our instructional specialist, Home and Careers and Health is now here at Bailey. We have a wonderful new innovation lab, and I hope you all had a chance to see it. We continue with our newcomers program, and because of the budget passing, we are still able to have our after-school enrichment program. And we are continuing to be partners with Manhattanville College because our budget has passed. So thank you to the community. We want you to understand that teamwork makes a dream work, and we cannot do this alone. Principal, assistant principal, my building leaders, my professor and resident from Manhattanville College, she'll speak for a minute, district coordinators, PLC, all of them can help me see blind spots. I'm one person. So, Ms. Mensch and I have done wonderful walk-throughs in class. Just observe teachers, he can see something that I might not see. And it's great to have someone that you can just talk to and work things out and have a good relationship where the teachers know that we're not there to... It's not a got you, get you, we're there to help. And I love that relationship and the culture that's being built here at RJ Bailey. So they keep me accountable, they also make sure that I'm visible, and they all together work with me, continue to progress our students. Now you're going to hear from other people and not just me. So I'm going to have our instructional specialist come up, Mrs. Shiper-Rossi. Some of you might know her. She's a high-view teacher, she is our summer school principal. She is our instructional specialist at RJ Bailey. This is an additional position that has helped me. And I'm going to let her just speak about all the wonderful things that she's doing here at RJ Bailey.
Ms. Rossi, good evening, everyone. As the instructional specialist, what we have done is in an effort to improve student learning, we're kind of focusing on the reading. Along with Roy DeAndre, who's the instructional specialist, K. Six, we have taken on Fontes and Pinel, and we have alone ELA and L special, our teachers on both three grades. We have assessed over 400 students within a three and a half to four week period. And what is detailed, considering which student between the ten minutes having a read to us and actually having a conversation to see what it is they understood, and it helps us pinpoint by observing their behavior while learning their weather proficiency, the accuracy, summarizing, and emotional. And with that data, we were able to meet with the teachers and discuss and help that form groups, guided reading groups. And now the teachers are taking students who have the same needs, and they're going to instruct students accordingly in small groups within their privacy block. We've also, in the past two of these whisper days, we've worked with staff development, using some of the videos from Fontes and Pinel. And we're, with the help of Dr. Chase and Dr. Valente, we're bringing in some trainers from Fontes and Pinel who are now going to read to guided reading. So we're hoping that we can focus on each student's needs that we can move forward and contribute to.
Thank you. And as you saw the slide, the first slide with 32%, maintaining 32%. The district identified that we still need to do more. We definitely have our just words, we have our Wilson. The district is training our own teachers in Wilson so that we can continue to be skilled in how to help our students become more proficient. And as we were looking at data with Ms. Rossi, we also noticed that there are some threshold students, some students right at the cuff. About 18 missed one question, that they could have actually showed proficiency. So we understand that, we're working on that. And I'm going to ask Ms. Mastriangelo to come up, because she is not only our PLC leader, she's one of our great math teachers, and she's also helping coordinate our Saturday program. So, Mrs. Mastriangelo.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for asking me to speak tonight. There are great things happening at Bailey, and you all know that because you spend time here. But I'm going to talk a little bit about math. And as teachers, we constantly reflect on what works, what doesn't, what can we do better. And we spend a lot of time looking at data and looking at the children themselves and the way in which they learn best. And we've started to realize in math that a more linear approach seems to really be effective with many of our youngsters. And that doesn't mean we have to throw away what we have. Everything we have works fine with that. But rather than trying to align units of study to modules, we found we can align modules to units of study and get a lot more bank for our buckets. It's more of a, we call it a mastery model, where the kids can complete an entire overarching unit of study and really show mastery in it before we move on and then come back and revisit later in areas of problem solving and other areas like that. And the same, like I said, the same materials that have been working for us, we can still use iExcel, we can still use iReady, we're using the New York State math modules, our coach books. All of them work beautifully together, and it's just a matter of now, where do we use this lesson? Should this maybe come after that one instead? That means we go back, we rework our curriculum maps as well to reflect that. Those are living, breathing documents, they change almost every day, even though we just updated them within the last two years, I'd say. We're working on them again, updating them to reflect the next-gen standards as they come in in math. There's not a lot of changes with those standards, but there's some subtle changes. And if you get a chance to look at those documents, many of the units have been renamed to reflect the domains instead of the modules. And we're hoping that this helps to move us forward. There, yeah, we did, at our last math committee meeting over at Central Office, we actually got to look at the two different sets of standards side by side. And for instance, I teach fifth grade, there are exactly zero changes in fifth grade, but there are some grades that have some very subtle changes. They seem to mostly be in the language and in the teacher explanation as to what vocabulary to use, but really no... I think the only change I saw was one had, where they mentioned unit fractions, it then went to fractions that had, a unit fraction has one as its numerator, fractions that had numbers other than one as the numerator, very minor. It just seems to be laid out a little bit differently, but the standards themselves seem to be almost identical. And I certainly speak for fifth grade, they're all identical, it's it, no changes. Yes. So we're working on the curriculum maps that will be very useful to any teacher who, even if you didn't write it, it'd be the way it's laid out now with this kind of linear approach. You can go unit by unit, and it's really helpful with the pacing, which is important too. We have a very broad, dense curriculum, and we have a lot to cover in not a lot of time. It lets us know what things to stress and what things can we spend a little less time on. And as Mrs. Washington mentioned, we are really rich in data, and we look at that data frequently at our PLC meetings. We're going to be using the data from the mid-year diagnostic that the children are going to be taking in two weeks to help form our next win groups, because those groups are very fluid as well, and they're based on the children's needs, not just in math, in ELA as well. And Mrs. Washington mentioned Saturday Academy, that is, we're in year two of that. It has a little bit of a different face this year. We have outside instructors coming in to instruct the youngsters. I am here, I'm attached, sometimes Mr. Thorpe is here as well, but I'm here and I oversee it. But they are using the New York State modules, same as what we use here. So it's, there's good consistency for the children. They're not, you know, doing anything so outlandish that they haven't seen before. It's great because it's reinforcing what we're doing here. Also, they tested the children in the beginning, gave them a diagnostic assessment, and then are designing programs based on what those tests showed. And they're, they also are aware of which are the power standards that are necessary that the kids really get exposed to, and that's what they're working on with them. They have, there's about 10 children enrolled per grade that are receiving that instruction. Were there any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you. And now, we're going to have Ms. Mangum come up. She is our ELA fifth-grade teacher.
Thank you, Principal Washington. Good evening. So to piggyback on what Mrs. Mastriangelo said previously, a big part, a large part of what's important in terms of any curriculum, and just as in math, as it pertains to the ELA curriculum, is data. So in terms of collecting data as part of the ELA team, Fontes and Pinel is a big part. I want to just say that Mrs. Rossi, in terms of implementing Fontes and Pinel within the building, has been really, you know, a big help and a large support in terms of the training and in terms of supporting teachers, and so we thank her for that. Two questions that an educator must ask that are crucial when supporting students in their journey are, where are the students on the reading continuum? And once I have this data, what do I do with it? It's really important that as students are learning to read, that you know what they know and what they need supporting. With that said, Fontes and Pinel is really, really helpful in this regard. Fontes and Pinel was created by Irene C. Fontes and Gacy Du Pinel. And it's a system of reading levels and strategies that were developed to address students' needs through guided reading groups. The first component is to administer the Fontes and Pinel reading assessment. Each student is assessed individually. Although this can be time-consuming, as we know and as we discussed previously, it's a very, very important part in understanding and identifying the reading levels, the student strengths, and the area in which further support is necessary. Once the Fontes and Pinel or FNP assessment, once the assessments are completed, the data is then analyzed. This information informs a teacher of the following. One, the current FNP reading level of the student. And two, within these particular reading levels, what the student does well and what reading skills and strategies must be reinforced. These assessments are administered three times per year. One time in the fall, once in the winter, and once in the spring. The ongoing assessments allow the teachers to guide instruction by continuously examining guided reading groups and lessons. And so the ultimate goal of utilizing the FNP system is to really have a depth of knowledge into each and every student that we service. And with this depth of knowledge, it tells us how we need to move, how we need to teach, how we need to stretch, how we need to reinforce, and how we need to better serve and best serve our students. And it is my belief, it is my belief, and I'm truly confident that we, as an RJ Bailey family, are well on our way to bringing our student to proficiency and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have the same belief. Now we're going to hear from our students. You guys ready? When Dr. Chase and the Board of Education allowed me to be the interim principal, we had a student population of 386, and I'm proud to say that we have a student population of 435. And we, at this current time, and we have some students who are actually leaving private school, hearing some great things about Bailey and coming to Bailey. So I just wanted you to hear a little bit, you're going to hear about the win period, you're going to hear about the departmentalization from our students. So are you ready, Jill? This is Jillian Castro, our fourth grader in Ms. Alice's class.
Hi, my name is Jillian. And I used to be in a private school, and I moved to RJ Bailey. But the times were hard in my public school because there was a lot of work, less recess, more homework, but not that much time to spend with teachers. And my teachers were tough. When I came to this school, I experienced that. My teachers are nice, the principals were warm, was warm, and everybody's friendly.
Thank you, Jillian. Okay, so we're going to have Kendall, are you ready? And Jake, come on up. They want to do this together.
Hi, my name is Kendall Mangum.
And my name is Jake Moore.
Today we'll be talking about a number of different things pertaining to what we do in school. So honestly, I love switching classes because you get to see the different personalities of the different teachers. And sometimes some of the teachers will be strict and other times will be really nice. But it's nice to have the different balances of each one. The second thing I want to talk about is WIN. WIN is when a grade level is split up into ELA or math enrichment groups, depending on what you need. I don't need help in ELA or math, but what I do need help in is enriching what I already know to make me a better student. What I love about WIN is that I'm in a class with students who have the same needs as I do. The only thing I don't like about WIN, that, the only thing I don't like about WIN is that it's not all Dan and Ed. Overall, I love my principal, my teachers, and my friends.
Hi, my name is Jake Moore, and I'm a fourth grader here at RJ Bailey. First, I would like to talk about switching classes. Switching classes is good because you get to see different teachers' personalities, and it doesn't feel like you're sitting in one room with one teacher being mean or strict. You can also feel the motive to move around or feel good about having different teacher personalities and feel good about carrying book bags around and taking your stuff out and feel more grown up than your high schools. And I'd say I'd like to talk about WIN. WIN is great because it helps a subject that you're struggling with. The win groups are ELA, math, and STEM. My win group is STEM. I love WIN because it helps me have fun, and I learn, and there's many good challenges, such as the innovation challenge. WIN is not good, like Kendall said, because it's not in every class for every period. But overall, I love my principals, I love my teacher, I love my friends, and...
Thank you very much, fourth-grade perspective. Now we're going to have a sixth grader who has been with us since fourth grade. Can you come on up, Constance? And I just want you to know, I'm going to put a plug in. I did ask Constance Davis because I knew her mother would be here. Yes!
My name is Connie Davis, and I go here, and I'm a fifth grade. So what I like about WIN is that you get to be in class with people on the same level of understanding with you so that if you learn faster than other people, then you can go into different classes with people who learn as fast as you. Also in WIN, I feel more challenged to do my best because sometimes I get bored with what our teachers give us because it's like, sometimes I do it like really quickly because I'm a class worker. So in WIN, I'm not bored with the material that they give me. And in WIN, everyone is on the same learning level, so we have more time to learn new things, so we don't have to like stop and like... And since I'm... And since I'm preparing for middle school, in WIN, there's more independence than in regular classes. So that gives me and other sixth graders a chance to be independent for when we go to middle school.
Okay, and we have one of our newly fifth graders, and her mother's going to come up. She's going to speak about Mandarin, so come on. And her experience coming to RJ Bailey.
Hi, my name is Alicia Owens, and I'm here today to talk about the Mandarin program at RJ Bailey. The first reason I like our Mandarin program at RJ Bailey is because of the original lesson plans. Our Mandarin teacher designs all of our lesson plans himself. He does not use the textbook because he wants the students to tell him what they want to learn about Mandarin and how he can teach them better. We are also learning the Chinese virtues and good habits, such as a sense of responsibility in Mandarin. Patience and kindness are also some of them. And students are leaders in the class with the teacher. They work with the teacher. Like, for example, we have the teacher's assistants and the classroom, the teacher help and hand the monitors. And they all help the teacher by helping other kids if they don't understand and different things in the classroom. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for the invitation to come out and speak this evening. My name is Mariah Owens, and I'm a resident of Greenberg for about 12 years now. But just three years ago, we adopted the Greenberg Central School District. I have five children. So we are in the middle school building, at RJ Bailey. We're in the high view, and I have a little guy at ECP. So we're getting a look across the board here. And it's been a wonderful experience. We were in captain's school for a few years and for a number of different reasons, didn't feel we were having the best experience we could have. So we came over to public school, and we made sure we came in the building, took a tour, and met each principal. To say that we've had a great transition is understating. It's, we've been very impressed. It felt, when we walked through the door, like a warm community. I heard a lot of people use that word. Each, we felt embraced. Each one of the principals, and my husband and I both find it so interesting and impressive, across each building. We feel like we have a one-on-one connection. We feel that they know us, they recognize us. And as a parent, to feel that warmth means so much, knowing that my children are welcome in those buildings and they're feeling the same, they're thriving. Both my fifth grader and my eighth grader were first honors, first quarter. We're hoping for the same, of course. But they're doing phenomenal. They're doing phenomenal. You know, we just, and I'm telling anyone who was there, I bumped into a mom and that, I knew her from the public school supermarket, and she said, "You know, when you get your brain, we're thinking of changing over to public school." And I chewed her ear off. I couldn't say enough good things, and I want that to be the message to everyone who may be thinking of the same thing, which is moving in. So thank you, all of you, for making this feel this way and taking this district in a positive direction. That's beautiful.
Thank you so much. And our last presenter is our professor-in-resident from Manhattanville College. She's just going to speak quickly, one minute, and then we are on our way. All right, Dr. Joseph.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Okay, so I have another 60 seconds, if that's okay. Mrs. Washington asked me to come down and speak about what it is that I do as the liaison between Manhattanville College and the school of education. But I, in listening, I want to say something else. Bailey is a professional development school, which means it has three particular goals. One goal is to provide insight. My name is Nikki Joseph. Hello. Proud graduate of Bailey and Woodlands, 1994. And professor in Manhattanville School of Education in the area of special education. This is my fourth year here as liaison or professor-in-residence. He's been in China for years. And as a professional development school, we're new. Parents, I don't know if everyone received a brochure. This is a building where my students, who are in the School of Education, come to train, essentially. As a professional development school, there are three goals here. First goal is to provide training for future teachers, what we call student teachers and teacher candidates in the building. Goal two is for us to provide, Manhattanville College, to provide professional development for the staff and teachers here under our leadership. And goal three, and the most important, is to enhance the learning outcomes of our babies. So as a liaison, it's my job to do whatever it is this building wants me to do to help them to get those goals achieved. So that means my job changes every year. Beautiful thing is, I'm one of a team. She has a wonderful leadership team that one of our teachers, Mrs. Coben, is on. We have a representation from every grade level and all the different stakeholders in the building. But I wanted to just give accolades on my 35 seconds left. In terms of the goals, in order for us to prepare student teachers, so far over four years I've been here, we have imposed science methods classes on-site, where Manhattanville students are here working with your students with the research-based methods and all of their professors. Instructional strategies, where teachers are the guest speakers, which we've had two of them here, Mrs. Shandora, Mrs. Mango, where they share with our teacher candidates in Manhattanville what's going on in the classroom and how our students in Manhattanville learn as well. In terms of the second goal in professional development, I'm so proud to say, Mrs. Washington has supported us going to the National Professional Development Schools Conference for the last three years. In the last two years, our teachers have submitted presentations and they've been all through. So we presented last year at the Greenberg, and then we got approved again to present in March. So we just put that in, super excited about that. As well as adjunct opportunities for new teachers here. They have funds for yoga, mindfulness training. Course releases, and there are three courses at Manhattanville in their choice. They have, they can attend the Changing Suburbs Institute Conference on campus for free. There's also parent conferences, totally in Spanish, for free. I'll move on to our third goal, which is increasing learning outcomes for our students. The student teachers that we've had, I think she's had more than 10 since I've been here. We have three starting on Monday. She will also have, she will also have a fellow to work one-on-one with students in a tier-three level for her reading specialist after school. I could keep going, I'm just so excited. But it's my job to make sure those things happen with the small budget that Greenberg gives us. And we're excited to celebrate 10 years of being a professional fellow. So parents, we're students. Once they graduate, I have to say, once they graduate, whether they finish with us or not, get a 50% off discount at Manhattanville. That's in your brochure. Also, parents, you get a third off of the tuition at Manhattanville for any courses you want to take because you're part of the professional development school team. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have about that. Yes, Mrs. Joseph. Yes, there is a, every year, we are partly, professional development schools come from the Manhattanville College Changing Suburbs Institute. That's our big old brother. The Changing Suburbs Institute holds an annual conference every year in Spanish for our teachers, parents, Greenberg. We talk about special ed, school, whatever. And Mrs. Camacho is our liaison for that particular group, and she rallies people in, pick them in, have a bus, whatever it is we need to do with these free charges. Currently, we'll have three of us, and so we have one who is still here. Woo-hoo, subbing now officially. But, and we have our, one of our pride and joys, Mrs. Hirschberg, who came through as a student when I first started teaching. She's very, she now works here as well. So we have three coming on Monday and plus one fellow from Texas, which is different than student teaching. Student teachers are here all day. A fellow will be here three times a week for one hour, working on a particular project. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're really proud of our student candidate that's our approved substitute for Greenberg. Her name is Alande LaLuzma. She graduated from Woodlands High School in 2010. So we're really proud to continue to bring back community members to help them professionally develop and one day be a professional and keep moving on. We are proud of our Greenberg community. And as you saw, teamwork makes a dream work. I couldn't do this alone. So I want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Chase, Dr. Valente, Mary O'Neill, everyone who supports RJ Bailey, and thank you. Are there any questions? Yes. Okay. What was the question? How did improve WIN or... Well, what we, and Mrs. Master Angelo just speak about it, we use assessments that we have available to us. And WIN is supposed to be flexible and fluid. And this year, we increased WIN for three periods. Last year it was one. And the data really drives if the student needs to go to another group. So it's really the data. And the one thing that teachers, if a child says that they are bored, once you have that instruction, whatever targeted instruction, you have to see the student progressing so that they can go to the next level. I have, I just spoke to Mrs. Tilla today. In her enrichment group, she has 25 students and would like to add more. So we're going to actually look to see what teaching assistance we can use, what hands we can use, because we need the staffing to break the groups up even more. So we just had that conversation today. This is our second year going into WIN. So making sure the data speaks, but the teachers also have to monitor within the WIN groups to make sure that student could go to the next because it's supposed to be fluid and it's supposed to be flexible. Yes, they're fluid. No one's in one for the whole entire time. Any other questions? Yes. Any progress in our students now? Through our formative assessments, we have seen, we're continuing. It's so, just our, what we're using, we're using our Google's, Google data maps. So the teachers see some of the students that are in the, students that are passing, so like with our Just Words program. Almost every student in the Just Words program is receiving 80 and above. I think there's one student that has received like 72 on their unit assessments. So we are kind of keeping an eye on why that student's not getting 80 and above. We are seeing progress. We are. And we are excited about the progress we're seeing because we're identifying those students that we know. We just push them a little bit more. You know, we won't have as many threshold students. And we know the students that we're working with, our home book program after school. You know, our Saturday program and the WIN and what's happening in class. Now I just wanted to say this one thing. With our enrichment, we know we have students who are proficient and above. So the WIN answers to that, and we continue to work with Dr. Chase and Dr. Valente to discuss continued enrichment. So I just wanted to bring that up with the WIN students also. But we are seeing progress, and we are happy with that. There's ones that are struggling. We have our Wilson. We have the WIN period that helps. We have the Just Words. We also have our I-Ready instructional usage that we use all the time. We have iXL. Those programs are helping those students. Plus, we have the extra reading specialist. And we have our instructional specialist that works with the teachers and coaches then also. So the students that are struggling are identified. We put them in programs. If we have to go to RTI, we'll do RTI. But we try to put them in programs, scaffold the program for them. Students that we might feel have, you know, a learning disability, that's another route that we will take. But we are scaffolding to make sure the students that are struggling are getting what they need. So the additional reading specialist has helped us in that also, just so you know. I'm going to say yes. I'm going to, because the sixth grade is where we saw the biggest jump. And it was a departmentalized schedule with our sixth grade, and that's why we're so proud. And with Dr. Valente's, you know, vision and sitting down with me and saying, "Listen to me, Kiana. This is working." So we're really excited about that. And through the data, we really feel that we have the best teachers in the spots. So we're talking, in reference to ELA, let me just tell you one, what I observed and look at the data. One, is the critical thinking piece. Two, is the questions that are being actually posed in class. What we notice a lot of times, because of time and because, you know, you're in your lesson, you will ask students a question. "You know what color is she wearing right now?" "Oh, gray." "What color is she wearing?" "Red." "Okay, let's move on, that was great, you got it." They have to take time to let the students critically think. So the questions have to go from level one to level two to level three, where it's more, "Describe how Mr. Nick Lee walked down, you know, the aisle in the auditorium." Explain. Can you apply that? And those are the types, and taking the time to have dialogue, not looking at the clock. And I'm going to tell you as a teacher, when I was 15 years, you kind of looked at the clock because you had to get the curriculum. So the approach we're taking now is letting data drive along with the students' needs drive and actually changing our lessons so we can take a backseat and let the students really drive that class. I was in Mr. Root's class with, and it was actually Kendall and Jake's class, and it was a lesson. And the one thing that he did, he said, "What do you wonder? What do you notice?" You're in this group. They started talking. Kendall was then partnering with someone else. And then Jake went to another. The movement, but the dialogue, the buzz that was going on in the room, that's what we need. What do you wonder? What do you notice? How can you apply to your life now? And I do have to say with the addition to the World Language Program, the exposure. The exposure and having the departmentalization, having a social studies teacher. I know Dr. Chase and Mr. Thorpe went to a conference, and Mr. Thorpe said they were impressed that we take the time to make sure our elementary school teachers have a, I mean, elementary school students have a whole period of social studies, you know, it was double period. And science. We're not watering down this to ELA math because of any state tests. No, we're exposing our kids to all types of languages, all types of curriculum. And that will enhance their reading. So what, to answer your question, I believe it's the critical thinking piece. Also, we also did notice a deficiency in vocabulary. That came from our I-Ready, and that also came from our state assessment. So we are also working on improving vocabulary. I did have to speak. He was trying to take a backseat. He did. He's one of our rock stars.
Can the students speak this morning? Um, may I help you? Yes, thank you. Because, as I told my students, because I feel like now that it's to be a student is not easy because we all want to be a kid. We all, you know, I want to make this school a place that the students want to come. I want to make this school a place where we have a lot of beautiful... I want to make this school a place where we have a lot of beautiful memories rather than scores. And also, we have a beautiful semantic curriculum for the whole school district. And all school building, we stick to the same curriculum, the original curriculum that all the mentoring teachers designed together in, before the spring, uh, before this semester. And we just, it's kind of hard to find a textbook that suits, um, the level for like, at various grades, because we have first grade to sixth grade, they are all beginners. So we cannot just use a textbook and teach by the textbook, because they are different. Because first grade is totally different from sixth grade, and they all have their own interest about the culture, and they all want to apply the knowledge, apply Chinese philosophy and the cultural development to their own life. That's why it may take a lot of work to design all the lesson, all the sheets, everything ourselves, but we feel like it's worthwhile. And there's nothing we wouldn't do for our students. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for thinking about us. Thank you very much. And at any time, you can call me if you have any more questions. Thank you. Thank you to our students. Thank you so much to our staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It is anticipated that the board will adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons being considered for board action this evening. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Disposed? We're in closed session. Thank you. Will you all please rise with the pledge of allegiance? As we've already had our RJ Bailey school presentation, the next item on our agenda is statements from the public. We have one person signed up for statements from the public, that's Ms. Mary Spells.
We're here this new year with a great beginning. And as a parent in the school district, I would like to just say thank you, Dr. Chase, for sending a letter to parents, letting them know when to inspire everybody with criticism and witness their problem. It's very interesting to leave a letter to just confirm what happened again, and to thank you for your attention and call. We should be just thankful, and we are happy, and we will have the same, so thank you so much. Also, I want to say congratulations to our principal at the middle high school, Mrs. Smith. Very happy that he received his tenure as principal. As a parent, I want to say that he deserves that, uh, that, congratulations. And also, I want to thank him for the high expectations that Mr. Smith had of his staff, his teachers, his students, his entire staff, and also the parents. So to Mr. Smith, congratulations, have a wonderful, wonderful tenure here in our school district. Keep up the good work, and we will be there to support your efforts. High expectations is, that makes a great school district, that makes a great principal. So keep up the good work. Also, I want to say one thing that I've observed visiting many of the different schools. I was at a basketball game the other day, and I was just so impressed with the attitude and the respect of our athletes that they give to each other, as well as to their inviting the team that they play. I just observed the camaraderie, and observed the respect that any of these students have to each other, and also for our neighbor teams that play with us. I want to tell the students to keep up the good work. You know, it's supportive that you win, but it's more important that you show respect for each other. You're always a winner when you treat others with respect. And also, Dr. Chase, there's something that I'm observing that I, and to the board, that I know you look good, but there is a, a string of respect in the speeches. I looked at the music concert, the concert, the musical concert of all the schools, and I looked at, we observed all of the musicians, musicians as well as the directors of our music department and the bands. All of the music was on a great level and a, and a chronological age for our students. And for each group of students, from BLA to the middle school to the high school, those progression of, of, of ability level, and of the discipline. And I want to say thank you to all of those instructors from BLA, that were just here at high school, who gave us a very, very great performance. And for all the students, it was such a beautiful afternoon or evening, watching you, you make it happen. And I want to say thank you, students, and also thank you to the parents who make sure that the children, when their histories and goals continue to grow and evolve. It's just so great to go from school to school and see children, how the children, it's great to see teachers teaching and children learning. And I invite parents, come into the rest of the town. It's, it's, it makes you feel good to know that you're part of the school district, that's going somewhere, you want to be a part of that, someone to be there. So, so many of the leaders who are on our district, and it's been a good work, and we are doing this so good.
Thank you, Mrs. Spells. Next item on our agenda is policies presentation. There are four policies and limits we consider for board adoption. February 13th board meeting, considering education of homeless children, graduation, diploma, and our credential options for students with the district clerk's office. They are available in all the school buildings and on our website. There's a table right outside of this room, where there's also a, a, a set of hard copies. All comments concerning these policies should be submitted in writing to the Board of Education. Next item on our agenda, the superintendent's report. Dr. Chase?
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. This is our first public meeting in the 2018 school year. We have a wonderful 2017 dating from January up until December, and we look forward to sharing those highlights with you, as well as continuing our goals in this school year. I just want to just thank Bailey Elementary School for their presentation this evening. I was especially impressed by the students we presented. I just want to spend a little bit of time talking about one particular student as well as a parent, Julian Castro. I remember when she and her brother first entered our school district. In fact, I met them at the mansion, and the mother was very apprehensive. Mom's Lily Castro. And she came in here with a postal uniform toward the end of the presentation, and you have seen her. She was very apprehensive, because her students were at, her children were at a charter school in the Bronx. And I asked her to please give me an update after the first few days of school, and she didn't give me an update. What she did was she had Julian send me a video message, speaking about the first few days of school. And I'll never forget that message. It absolutely made my day. So the students spoke from their hearts, and I think it's always wonderful when children are happy and when they speak from their heart. I want to speak about the parent who spoke, Ms. Owens. Mrs. Owens and her husband, I actually met at one of the, the dads take your children to school. Mr. Owens took the day off to attend the event. Later on, he introduced me to his wife, and I met them at a separate event, and they had nothing but wonderful things to say about our school district. But these are parents that I'm describing to you, who may have heard things, and they told me they've heard things about our school district, who gave it a try, and are absolutely pleased with the rigor, with the work, the fact that their children are engaged, their children are empowered, and their children are happy and they're learning. And so I want to thank those parents and students for speaking honestly and from their hearts about our school district. Last thing I want to share, and most of you may have received the app, I'm sure you've received that beautiful sound, hey, right? That scares you as you're driving? Okay, we love it, I'm not changing it. So I just want to share with you that, as you probably know, the weather models continue to change. I'm a weather geek, I enjoy looking at the weather, so we have the California models, you have the European models, we have all sorts of models, and they're constantly changing. And Mary O'Neil and I have been looking at the weather pretty much all day. I sent the message out to our families, just letting you know that in the event, I will need to alter our school day. You will hear from me at 6:15, so begin getting your childcare in order, just in case that happens, I don't want you to be that hanging. I'm not predicting anything, because it seems that it's constantly changing. If you do not hear from me in the morning, that means we will have a regular day of school. So let's keep our fingers crossed for a regular day of school. I'm sure the children are not pleased hearing me saying that. On that note, I wish everyone a good night and safe travels. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Assistant Superintendent Business Report. Mary?
Our general fund beginning balance for the month of November was $27,994,654.26. We received a total of $4,579,460.45 in receipts, and issued $2,731.34 in payroll checks, and another $4,179,034.11 in accounts payable. Our accounts payable checks were higher this month due to the fact that the district made the annual ERS and TRS payments. Our ending balance is $25,694,379.96. The district issued 964 payroll checks this month and 186 accounts payable checks. Everything was audited. I've also been asked to provide a brief update on the repair reserve projects, and where we stand with them. As you know, the voters established the repair reserve projects in the amount of $100,000. The board approved work at the high school, which was the small gym floor, wall pads and stair treads for $184,000. The gym floor and the wall pads are complete, they were estimated to cost $105,000. The actual cost came in at $103,92, resulting in a savings of approximately $4,600. The stair treads were estimated at $60,000, and bids came back at slightly over $50,000, resulting in about a $10,000 savings. However, we've kind of put it on hold for a little bit, because we've had a request to pull off the stair treads and sand them down to see how it looks, so we're waiting for someone to come back in to sand. Mr. Falcone's making arrangements for that. Overall, the project is expected to commit about $14,000 on the budget. The board also approved the elevator and condensation tank repairs for RJ Bailey for a cost of $89,700. Due to, due to the delays in receiving plans and specs from our architects, we started to look at other options for, Mr. Falcone was able to, in his existing budget, find a vendor that could repair the elevator controls rather than replace the controls. So that is done, you do not need to replace the controls. He was also, in his existing budget, able to replace the condensation tank. At this time, we do not need the $89,700 for that project, so that frees $89,000 up for future, another repair reserve project. At Hyview, we put in for a gym floor, or the project is for a gym floor, PA system, and exterior stairs for a total of $167,900. The gym floor was budgeted at $39,000, however, the bid came in at $74,237. It was requested that we postpone the installation until spring. The PA system was budgeted at $28,000 and came in at $33,432. In order for us to move forward with the installation of the PA, we had to purchase new switches, which still have to be installed in our servers. The switches have been ordered in, we're awaiting their arrival. The exterior stairs, unfortunately, was not included by our prior architect in the original project. The amount that was budgeted for that was $80,000. We are currently working with our new architect to develop plans and specs for the stairs at Hyview. They're estimating that that's going to come in at about $30,000. So we're going to have some savings. I'm sorry, the, overall, the, the project will come in basically right around what you budgeted, even doing another project. So where you had $167,900, all of those projects, the savings from the reduction in the stairs will offset the increases in the other one. The Jackson fire alarm panel in parking lot, we had set aside $133,400. This project, again, was not submitted by our prior architect, so our new architect is working on it. The fire alarm panel, we budgeted to replace it at $18,000. Our new architect informed us that SED will not allow us to just replace the panel. If you go pull out the panel, they're going to want to replace the entire fire alarm system. So we've, we're working, or Mr. Falcone is working with a local vendor to see if we can locate parts to repair it. The parking lot pavement is budgeted at $98,000. In order to move forward on that, we have to have plans drawn up of the parking lot. Now, if you don't end up having to do the fire alarm panel, you're probably not going to want to do the, the paving under the repair reserve, because you will not get in on it. So we're going to hold off, waiting to see what happens with that. And again, the architects still have to submit to state ed. So that, I'm hoping within another week or two, we will know where we stand with that. If we can't do it under the pair reserve, we'll wait toward the end of, to the end of the year and see what funds are available to do it with, with district funds. The mansion fire, the mansion had a project scheduled for a fire alarm for the $80,500. Again, this project was never submitted by the prior architect. Our new architect has been working on it, and their preliminary cost came in for the fire alarm to be $150,000. So it's basically doubling the cost. Depend, we could use, if, if the board so chose, we could use funds from RJ Bailey that you no longer need, and apply it to the mansion fire alarms. What we would have to do there is, I'm sure resolutions, and I'll work with, with the attorneys and with the architects on how to move forward with that.
Let me ask you, if we reallocate money from one project, does that require a [inaudible]?
I would have to check that with our, with the attorneys and verify how we're going to do that, because we already have the existing project. They would have to give us guidance on that.
Is there a way that we can move on that to the [inaudible]? Or is it going to be the same thing?
For where, which one? All the entire project?
No, not the [inaudible].
Yes. I, I, I will try to have that information inside of home on the Friday.
Thank you.
Mary, just for clarification, is it possible...
Mary, just for clarification, is it possible, excuse me, Ms. O'Neal, for clarification, can you, is it possible for you to just share with the community which parking lot you will refer to in terms of the pavement? Because I didn't hear it, I'm sure.
It was clear, it's when you come in, in the hall front parking lot.
Which, which facility?
Jackson, I'm sorry.
We have Jackson.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
We started with the, so the planning meeting, which was held on the, let me see, I think this was January, January eighth? Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, January eighth. And in attendance was Dr. Chase, Mary O'Neal, Karen Wallace, Chris Valen, David Werner, and myself. We'll be here. Facility meeting was held on January eighth, 2018. Dr. Chase mentioned that due to all of the building's issue in the last few weeks, Mr. Falcone would be coming to the workshop to make a comprehensive report to the board. Issues included busted pipe in Lea Jackson and ECP, boiler smoking at RJ Bailey, freezer, freezing pipe at the mansion and Welcome Center, middle school, high school border issues. We also discussed that the board is willing to meet on an emergency basis if needed, snow removal around the district, five-year capital plan which currently being completed. This will provide us with detailed information on all projects needed in the future and can help guide us in moving forward. The consolidation plan and the committee would like to see this move forward. Our next meeting would be February 12th, 2018. I also have a report from the fiscal planning, which was held on also January eighth. Present with myself, David Werner, Tracy Mayer, Dr. Chase, Mary O'Neal, and Chris Valen. Meeting started at 4:08, ended at 4:37. The fiscal planning meeting was held on January eighth. We discussed the following: tax gap and, and were provided with several documents, including description of the tax gap, how the tax gap is calculated, and tax-based growth factor. We will still, we are still waiting on the inflation factor, but it is anticipated to be 2%. A reconciliation of our state aid indicates that we will come in about $70,000 higher than budgeted. Until the governor's budget proposals are released for the 18, 19 school year, we will budget the same amount of state aid that we currently have. We discussed our current debt and it would, it was requested that future details be provided. We discussed employment benefit and how the increases will impact next year. Retirement costs are remain, remaining level next year, however, are expected to increase after that. Worker's compensation is expected to increase 15.3%. Health insurance is expected to have an overall increase of 7.49%. We received current transportation expenses. We also discussed the President new tax law and the veteran exemptions. Dr. Chase spoke about STEM and Mandarin program as well as described the 18, 19 accelerated learning program. Our next meeting will be held February 12th, 2018. End of my reports.
Thank you. Other reports?
Yes, the community engagement meeting, we, 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 we,[1366.13]